I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any changes to be adjourned?
We do have one. We will be scheduling items six point one for the next meeting.
Any other changes? Sing and none. Do we have a motion for approval of your adjournment? Also, we have a motion for your second.
Doctor booked.
Second. Your motion in a second.
Mayor George M. Lander?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
And Mayor Lander?
Aye. And that be noted, Councilwoman Spolz will not be attending the meeting this evening. Okay, our next item is awards presentation, updates and confirmations. We have one item. And I know everybody wants to hear about this. This is a hospital update by our hospital board member, Mr. Billis.
Doctor Mayor Lander, Councilman, and citizens of Colinga, thank you for the opportunity to give you a report. I will tell you what I know. The city manager invited Dr. Singh to attend tonight and present a first-hand update, but no one from AAMG, the current leaseholder, has responded. So you will be hearing secondhand information from me as a member of the hospital board. A short history. Our former CEO retired at the end of March 2018. The hospital was in deep financial troubles. Wayne Allen, our incoming CEO, took over around April 1st. There were several stakeholder meetings, and we were reaching out to potential partners to help us through this difficult period. However, nobody stepped forward and on May 3rd, the emergency department called, shortly thereafter, all departments ceased operation. However, the skilled nursing facility remained open while we relocated the residents. It's interesting that on May 17th, we received a letter from Adventist Health expressing interest in leasing the buildings on the CRMC campus in order to provide imaging, lab, physical therapy, rapid care, and rural health clinic services on our campus. In the meantime, AAMG, Dr. Singh, attempted to take over management of the hospital, basically take over the operations, and restore all the services. However, this required that the state approve a management services agreement, and that did not happen. We had already closed. The license had expired. So basically, he wasn't able to just step in, and the whole idea was that he could use the existing license and all the Medicare numbers and the reimbursements and everything as is. So that didn't happen. And we put the license in suspense for a year, which meant that at some point within a year, it could be reactivated without going through the lengthy process of starting all over again. End of July, Adventist sent 17 people to tour the campus. However, nothing ever materialized, and they declined to engage with us, and we were very disappointed. Okay, in September, we filed for Chapter 9 bank assets. Well, these are actually the assets of the community because the community basically owns the hospital, or the district. Meanwhile, we were approached by Cura Healthcare as well as AAMG, Dr. Singh again, to buy or lease the hospital. But we, Cura wanted to buy the hospital, and then Dr. Singh wanted to lease with the option to buy. Some of the board visited the Modesto office where Dr. Singh's long-term acute care facility is. Then others went to Calusa and Willow's and actually saw two operating healthcare centers. They looked very good. And one of them, the Calusa, had actually been closed for maybe 18 months, and they basically died it from being dead. So we were encouraged. We were impressed. Okay, skip ahead to February 2019. Adventist announced that it would build a, or it wanted to build the big facility at Forest and Oak. And we went to, went and talked to them, and yes, they were aware. And in the meantime, we had started an agreement with Dr. Singh to lease the hospital and take over. They were, AAMG was concerned about the Adventist mega clinic, and had an escape clause in the agreement which allowed them to withdraw that penalty. In March, we voted on Measure R, which the community resolutely approved to allow Dr. Singh to purchase or to lease with the option to buy the hospital in return for starting up the, restoring the facilities of the hospital. On April 1st, Dr. Singh took the keys, and the employees and the board, and he took the employees. The board then was relegated to a role of landlord without any particular involvement in the operation or reopening the hospital. That was all up to AAMG. Utilities were supposed to be paid by AAMG as well as insurance. They were supposed to maintain the grounds in good condition and basically keep the hospital going as it had been before. This transition, though, took several months during which our district paid the utilities and billed AAMG for the reimbursement. Not much visible activity took place. You really couldn't see anything going on. And we wondered whether Dr. Singh was just waiting to see what would happen with Adventist before he, you know, went full over. After vigorous opposition by the public at the September planning commissions hearing, Adventist dropped the proposal for the clinic, and the path was cleared for opening. Painting started. A possible January opening was mentioned. At subsequent meetings, the board was informed by AAMG. That process was slow and would largely be invisible to us. Applications for pharmacy and radiology and policies and procedures were being processed in order to satisfy the state. A new CEO was designated who attended a few meetings and echoed the long process. A clinical staff-only job fair was announced and held in early December, and it was well-attended. In the meantime, progress reports were not forthcoming, although we requested them frequently, what's going on. The last visit we had from AAMG was in the, at the January board meeting, where the new CEO announced medical staff hiring would start in February, and a non-clinical job fair would occur sometime in the months of March. Also announced was that the pharmacy license application was to pay Singh high, and it was a long problem to tend. And that the purchase of the hospital equipment had not occurred, and that was due to being not trying to negotiate a fair market value. We were still working on that. The anticipated opening was then pushed out to August, and that is the last milestone we have heard. The board continually pumps AAMG for information without receiving a response. We are monitoring utilities and are not satisfied with the maintenance of the grounds, and we have informed of that. We still believe in the amount of funds in licenses, utilities, insurance, and possibly hospital equipment. If they were not going to follow through, we would think that would have happened already. If, however, they do decide to withdraw, they get nothing. They get nothing. They walk away, and we still have the hospital. We still have the equipment. So that's the situation. The next four to six weeks will be critical for AAMG to execute and get moving because the current suspended hospital license will expire soon. So renewing that will indicate their intent. This is all we know. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Bill. Is there any questions? I get a lot of questions at work, so I'm glad. That's why we're happy that you came forward and gave us this presentation.
The board is disappointed that we don't have more information. We have firmly tried to extract some morsel of the information that we couldn't tell the community because we know the community is anxious about it. We're anxious about it. We have no authority over the reopening of the hospital. And we firmly believe that it's in their best interest to open the hospital, but we are basically observers dislike you.
Would it be helpful if, say, a couple of board members and perhaps the mayor or council member went to them and tried to have a meeting with them to tell them, you know, that we obviously know, but just to let them, remind them of the urgency of getting our facility open? Would that be helpful? If, if you would like to, I'd volunteer my time to go with you. I would be happy to do that.
Okay, well, as I, as I mentioned earlier, Marissa sent a direct invitation to Dr. Singh. And I mentioned that if he did not show up, that I was going to give this report. So we are somewhat fluxed, or fluxed.
Frustrated.
Frustrated.
Do they have any board meetings?
Sorry?
AAMG, do they have board meetings?
Not that we know of. I have to say, I believe that their infrastructure lacks some structure. There's not good communication between the different people. We had been talking to Van Preet Singh, Dr. Singh's nephew, and he was, he came out to several board meetings and revealed us with all the good things that were going to happen. But he has, he's been very, very responsive at this point, and it's very frustrating.
Could some of the companies step in and try to redo the license, the suspended license? Would that help at all?
I can't, I can't say on that. However, that would be, that would be the next plan. As if Dr. Singh withdraws or fails to perform, and we decide that he hasn't, he hasn't met the requirements of his agreement, then we would definitely look for other participants.
How, could you give us the date on the agreement?
Well, the agreement actually, it was like a 20-year lease with an option to buy. They were supposed to, as I say, maintain the grounds. What's, what's really should be driving them is the fact that if they wait too long and this license expires, what had been told is that the state will not elect them, just renew it and keep treading water. They have to, they have to show that they're making some progress. So that's what I've been told, that they can't just say, oh yeah, we're still working on it. So, and that, believe that it expires in May, so if they haven't stepped up by May, and it may be before that, that whatever happens is going to happen. But yeah, we definitely would look elsewhere.
So, and that's the whole thing, as Bill was saying, that the licenses have not been dropped, that have been suspended.
For a year.
For a year. So it's very, very important to get that done. And you're right, having attended those meetings, yeah, I think they did say May.
Yeah, they paid the license fee. They paid the license fee to get it going, and that was like last July. They paid the license fee. They purchased insurance. They, they reimbursed us for all the utility bills that we, that we had paid on their behalf. And they've been pretty much current, but we haven't been necessarily following how well the utilities are being paid. So we were trying to monitor that. That's one of the things we're doing is monitoring that they're paying the bills.
Well, I personally would just like to express my appreciation for the hard work that your board is doing to try to keep the thing open. It's not been an easy task, and we in the community are going, well, what's happening? How come it's not happening today? You know, and when you're dealing with the state of California, obviously, it takes a long, long time. But when you have no communication, that makes it even more difficult.
Very difficult.
But I have the utmost respect for all of you, trying to do your job. That's a very, very difficult job.
If we, if we get any new, any new information, we'll definitely put it out on the street.
Bill, thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Bill. Okay, we're going to move on to our next items. Citizens, excuse me, citizens' comments. The section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the city council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lecture, identify yourself, and please use the microphone. Comments are normally learned in two to 30 minutes. And according to state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening, and all items will be referred to staff or followed up in a report. Do we have anyone who would like to make any comments? Sing and none. Public hearing, we have none. We have one item, public hearing and adoption of resolution number 3955, a release, the submittal of the 2019-2020 Community Development Block Grant Application. Mr. Bruce.
I'll ask Susan from Southside to come up. She'll kind of present some of the information. But this is just a requirement of the Community Development Block Grant Program as part of applying for federal funds specifically for this program. And this project is actually specifically related to the second phase of the Van Ness storm drain improvement project from Elm Avenue all the way to Colinga Street. So council, I think, a couple meetings ago authorized the city engineer to be in design because this program is intended for shelf-ready projects, which are projects that are ready to go out to bid. So our engineer is working on the design and with our expectation of applying for grant funds here in the future. So Susan.
Hi, Susan.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and members of the public. So here this evening to make you aware of this funding opportunity and the requirements associated with that. The CBG program requires that the city conduct a public hearing on all CBG-related matters and provide and encourage citizen participation, particularly by low and moderate income persons who reside within the city. Therefore, the public hearing, we would want you to open the public hearing and invite comments from the public on potential opportunities for funding. I do want to state that this public hearing was noticed in the Hampton Sentinel on February 23rd, and that a NOPA was released on January 21st by the Department of Housing and Community Development, stating that there are $60 million in funding available under the 2019-2020 funding allocation. There is a competitive applications due on April 15th of 2020, and an over-the-counter application process which is started accepting applications on February 14th and will accept applications as long as funds remain available through September 30th. Eligible activities predominantly benefiting low and moderate income Californians include housing assistance programs such as single-family home ownership assistance and single-family housing rehabilitation, public facilities and public improvements, including public improvements in support of new housing construction, public service programs, planning studies, economic development, business assistance, and microenterprises. And the city may apply for a maximum of $3.5 million with a maximum of six activities. It is the desire of the city at this point to apply for funding of 2.137, cancel change, in funding for public improvements under the public improvement item, which is a non-competitive application over the counter for the storm drain improvements. That would include 3,510 linear feet, or just approximately two-thirds of a mile along Van Ness and Washington Street, beginning on the westerly side of Colinga Street and terminating at Allen. The purpose is to bring this project in alignment with the 2005 storm drain plan and reduce the elimination or eliminate the flooding and potential damages to homes and businesses in the area when we have significant rainfall. With that, I would invite you to open the public hearing, and I'll be available for questions.
The public hearing is now open. Does anyone want to speak for this or against this? Now is your turn. Seeing no participants, the public hearing section is closed. Counsel, any questions or comments? Wow. Look how easy that was.
Is this only for a storm drain pipeline?
This project that is being presented, yes, is for storm drain pipelines only.
Okay. So what, now does that count for redoing the street that is dug up?
Well, that would be part, you're going to have to dig up the street, put it in, so that would be a part of the project.
Yeah, unfortunately, there's a, there are a lot of utilities in Washington, so most likely the south side of Van Ness will probably, the sidewalks will have to be torn up. But all of that structure gets replaced as part of that. That's really why this project has a pretty significant price tag because of the other improvements that have to be replaced.
And just for the public's information, we use acronyms a lot, OCPER and CBG. Could you?
Community Development Block Grant. I apologize. After 25 years, I just roll off my tongue too quickly.
You know what? I just got on the laugh code board, and there's a whole.
It's a whole nother.
I'm wearing nails now.
Absolutely.
But could you just briefly explain what that is? Just really, an overview?
Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Yes, please do that.
Sure, absolutely. So Community Development Block Grant Funds are funds that come down from the federal government out of HUD. It's designated as an act in 1974, don't quote me on that, but to improve, for public improvements and housing improvements to assist low and moderate income households. Every year, the state of California gets an allocation from the federal government, and small cities and counties like Colinga have the opportunity to compete for funding under the state's Small Cities Program because they are not large enough to be directly funded by the federal government, and that's what this program is.
Perfect. That's perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you for coming out and telling us all about this.
No problem. Thank you.
So do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 3955, approving submittal of the 2019-2020 Community Development Block Grant Application? Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other comments, please?
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor George M. Ramsey?
Aye.
And Mayor Lander?
Aye. Our next item is consent calendar, and we have 14 items. And I have been informed that it's really not necessary for me to read all of this, but I do this for transparency reasons, because sometimes, well, you guys just said, bro, they don't know what happened. Well, we want you to know what's happening. Item one is approved in minutes of March 21st, 2019, which is amended. Item two is approved in minutes April 4th, 2019. Item three is information on the disposition of former Redeemed Agency properties. Item four is adopt Resolution Number 3953, the city council of City Colinga adopting the annual city investment policy. Item five is authorize city manager to execute city engineering task orders for construction, engineering, and design engineering for segments 10 through 12 of the Colinga Multi-Use Trail System funded by the Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Grant Program. Item six is authorize city manager to execute city engineering task orders for construction, engineering, and design engineering for the Polk Street Rehabilitation Project, Fifth to Alms Avenue, seen Route 198, funded by the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program. Item seven is adopt Resolution Number 3954, approving a list of projects to be funded by SB1. The Road Repair and Counterbailing Act is further authorizing a budget expense in the amount of $341,606 to execute the list of projects funded by SB1 in the 2020-2021 fiscal year. Item eight is review and approval of an expanded scope and updated budget to the Sunset Street Rehabilitation Phase One project and further authorizing the city manager to execute amended city engineering task orders for design services and construction engineering. Item nine is receive and file the Housing Successor Agency SB341 and report to the fiscal year 2013 through 2014 through 2018 through 2019. Item 10 is adopt Resolution Number 3956, extending the time period for the development and/or disposition of housing properties transferred from the former Colinga Redevelopment Agency pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section 34176-1. Item 11 is adopt Resolution Number 3957, declaring public nuisances on certain properties. Item 12 is approve agreement with HDL, Corin, and COME for property tax audit and information services. Item 13 is approval of MKN and Associates Water Analysis Contract. And item 14, Public Works Utilities and Community Development Monthly Report for February 2020. Any items you'd like to pull or discuss? I, I don't want to pull any of them, but I want to know if we could ask Sean just to give an overview of what we're going to do, because there's a lot of projects there that people want to know about. And could, could you just give us kind of a quick overview of basically all of them in three more lines?
Are you sure?
He knows about, he knows about all of them. I know.
I'll pull number seven so you can kind of.
I searched him up. Thank you. You're sure of number seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
You want to give us any questions on seven that I can answer for you?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're getting 300 something thousand.
From the SB1. Yeah. And we're doing all of Sunset for 300 something thousand?
No. So that's part, so part of number eight, which is the updated budget, you'll see that we have allocated. The purpose of getting seven approved tonight at the same time as eight is because by May 1st, we're supposed to submit to the state our list of projects that we're going to fund or construct under SB1. That was part of the, when the legislation passed, that was part of what needed to occur at the local side. And so in order, we're including, now we'll have three budget cycle, or three fiscal cycles of SB1 money that we're going to add to Sunset. So as the design's taking time, and we've got other priority projects that are federally funded that we have to work on now, Sunset's kind of been behind in terms of the design. And so as we've accumulated more future fiscal year revenues from SB1, we've been, I'm adding to Sunset, and we're just expanding Sunset. Because the goal was to use the SB1 money, just like we kind of did with federal funds for Forest, to eventually finish it. Now we've got three years of SB1 funds, including $500,000 in federal funds for this, for Sunset. We're going to be able to now complete Sunset in one complete project instead of actually breaking it up. So as we expand scope, the cost gets higher, and then we're able to add the additional money. So that, for that project, we'll be able to go from Polk Street all the way to Washington, as well as some improvements. I think I showed exhibited in the staff report where we're going to try to clean up that area at Jefferson and Sunset and Cedar, or Berch, I'm sorry. So that'll be kind of cleaned up into one larger triangle rather than having a painted white triangle in the middle of the street. So we're going to clean that up as well. So there's some costs included in that, plus some storm drain improvements and some sewer improvements, too. So now by selecting and acknowledging that this, that Sunset's going to be a part of this current allocation of funding, we'll advise the state of that by the deadline, and then that allows us to. we'll advise the state of that by the deadline, and then that'll allow us to update the budget to, to actually expand the scope. And then, of course, there's additional engineering costs associated with it as well, so.
How does Sunset get picked? I'm just curious.
How do what?
How does Sunset get picked?
Sunset, because it's one of the other heavily traveled, uh, roads that's actually in really bad shape.
Commonly known as Sunset Freeway during the school season.
Yeah, so we're gonna include some crosswalks and other safety enhancements as well around that area. So I will, let me get my list on. So I will, I'll start with the three there on the agenda, and I'll go through the other ones. But the first one is, um, the segments ten through twelve of the trail system, which is basically from Lucille all the way to Cambridge on Monterey. So there'll be a trail improvements, so we'll have that ten to twelve-foot asphalt section with some decompo, compacted decomposed granite for the runners, um, similar to what you'll see on Phelps. Though, we're not doing all the landscaping due to the heightened cost. Phelps was designed about five years ago. It's been on hold for quite some time. So when this project actually bid out, we found out how expensive, like, the Cadillac version of the trail system was going to be. And to be able to have that federal funding go further, the landscaping was a significant cost, um, to include. It could always be added in the future, um, but for the most part, it's being designed as, as shown in our master, in our Trails Master Plan. Um, so as it hits Polk Street, it'll utilize the roadway up to Monroe, and then it'll get back on the, uh, the path on the west side all the way to Cambridge. In terms of the next project, which is the Polk Street, uh, this is the first phase of Polk Street that we are awarded, uh, Surface Transportation Block Grant Funds. Uh, that is from Fifth Street to Elm, uh, on Polk Street, which is a full reconstruction. And so we are currently in design as a priority project right now due to the time constraints on the federal funding for the design. So hopefully, construction may even occur sometime later this year, in the winter. For Phase Two.
Okay.
Yes. Good. Now I can confirm, but we had, we were recommended by staff, uh, to approve for Phase Two, which includes from Elm Avenue to Monterey on Polk Street. And that will be probably another year out or so before we start design because of the, the federal funding cycles. So that project has been currently approved, so we'll start doing some design on that project as well. Um, let's see, what other projects do we have? Uh, as we know, uh, Forest is currently under construction, Elm Avenue is now open. Uh, and that project should be done in a couple weeks. The striping crews should be out there next week doing striping, some new crosswalks. And the striping will occur from Elm all the way to Polk on Forest. So we included a full comprehensive striping plan as part of the last phase of Forest. Um, so we'll see that, hopefully, in the next couple weeks will be closed out. Um, and then we'll also have a new crosswalk on Elm Avenue from the gas station to the gym. As you can see, there's some curb ramps there. Then we put in some flashing beacons, as well as some high-visibility crosswalk there to help some of the kids and funnel them to a safe location to cross. Um, we also have Phelps that's currently under construction. And they were like throwing Caltrans under the bus, but we are currently waiting on Caltrans to finish this project. Unfortunately, we're about a month behind. Um, they've had some concerns with the returns at the intersection of Elm and Phelps. So obviously, we don't wanna pave up to that area and then have to bring all those crews back. So as soon as we get our approach permit re-approved, um, hopefully by next week, we'll be able to mobilize, have the contractor re-mobilize and pave, and finalize up the, the intersection, and that will be done. Uh, we recently got, finally got authorization for construction for Cambridge and Elm. So hopefully, I knew that would get your attention. He's in my office all the time asking me what's going on with this project. Um, so we'll be able to go out to bid hopefully in the next few weeks, I imagine. Um, everything's pretty much ready to go, uh, all of our evens are in place, everything's ready to go, so we should be able to get this project out to bid soon. Um, and we shouldn't see too much disruption. We've kind of contemplated whether or not we would wait until summer. But I, we're not doing a lot of road work. It's mostly around the, on the, on the corners and installing light, light poles. Uh, so we're gonna get this done as soon as possible. Um, we also have, uh, let's see, I'm trying to think what other projects we got. I'm out of order here. Uh, Gale Avenue's currently under design, which is the reconstruction of about two hundred feet on Gale Avenue. Uh, so that's under design that we're gonna be finalizing and get that under construction relatively quick. It's a pretty straightforward project. Uh, Center Medium, we're finalizing the design on the Center Medium, making some tweaks to the designs. Um, and so as you can see, all the trees have been planted. Public Works is still finalizing and pulling some other trees out in some of the other locations on the Enterprise, Juniper Ridge, Sandalwood, Copper River, Copper Canyon, I think, is the street. Um, and then I think near Roosevelt, uh, we're pulling the turf out, and then we'll also be pulling, uh, den trees, putting new trees in. Uh, and then we'll be getting that ready for the contractors to be able to come in and do all of the installation of the cobble and the rock and all the decorative material and the holders that'll be added to those areas. Um, hopefully, that'll be starting here in the next maybe month or so. Uh, let's see, what other projects we have? We have the alley paving project that's, uh, currently under design. And, uh, we are, as we get closer to budget season, we'll be trying to figure out how we're going to pay for all of the underground infrastructure that needs to be done. Uh, we have about, I think it's seven alleys that are proposed to be paved, uh, which is pretty much the remainder of the ones that are really bad shape. There are some other ones that we recently applied for, for, under the CMAC program, which is the Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Program. Um, and those are kind of the ones that are in real bad shape, but not as bad as the ones that we've had. And, but we have some needs, uh, up for some water and sewer and gas upgrades. And so when we tear up the road, it's nice to be able to include that, but that equates to about a million and a half dollars of just underground infrastructure. And so we're looking at, when we look at the budget, we're looking at our water, wastewater, and gas budget to see what, whether we can, um, we can include that capital expenditure as part of this project. So, the roadway's paid for, it's just a matter of paying for the underground. So we'll be, hopefully, uh, be able to work the budget to be able to make those projects work as well. Uh, we also have our Active Transportation Program, uh, Grant Funds. Uh, one is for a huge comprehensive safety improvement around the schools and surrounding areas, all the way to Kev Park, with sidewalk improvements, curb ramp improvements, uh, what they call assembly signs for, for schools, safety bullabouts, crosswalks, um, rapid flashing beacons, um, so a lot of significant safety improvements on Sunset, California, uh, the Baker, uh, and then also areas in the surrounding areas where we have connectivity issues with lack of sidewalk to encourage our kids to walk to school, um, and make it safe for them to be able to get to and from. I think that might be it. And we have trails, we have some other trail funding as well, so, but I think that's.
Well, that sounds like a lot. And I know there's a lot more, but it's good to, and I'm glad you asked for that because it's good for the community to know exactly what's going on. A lot of times they say, well, they're not doing much. Well, you know what, there's a lot going on right now. And, uh, I, I did wanna say, thanks for all the hard work. We do, and you guys, they're doing it.
Thank you. But we also have this splash pad too.
Oh, this splash pad, that's right, they started them.
Yeah, so there's a tree that, we've taken a few trees out to take room for it. Uh, we're, we're in final design, and then hopefully we'll get this thing out. And it shouldn't be a long construction timeframe, but we'll have it ready hopefully by, by summer, so the kids can utilize it during the summer.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. All right, our next item is the. Oh, I'm just trying to do it. Thank you. Do we have a motion for approval of the consent calendar? So, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Aye.
Do we have a motion, a second, may I have a vote, please?
Mayor Proton Ramsey?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
And Mayor Lander?
Aye. Okay, now, we will have, um, you know what, we didn't have on there? Okay, let's do this, um. All right, we'll just go this way just a little bit. Okay, let's do, um, announcements for the city ambassadors announcements.
I only have one. I just wanted to let everyone know that we have crossing guard positions available that are volunteers. Um, is listed on the city website as city ambassador. And then you would be assigned a, um, crossing guard position at the school if you're interested. They need them in the morning and in the afternoon. Uh, the school district will provide a stop sign and a reflective vest, and our police department will provide some training on how to safely stop traffic. So if you're interested, it is a very short job application that is posted on the city website.
And just to let you know, this is a brand-new applicant right here.
Makes me get up a rainbow, right?
Um, and then apparently Sean has an announcement too.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, just I wanted to let everyone know, and I know, I think, uh, Nathan has, uh, it on Facebook Live right now, but we, we, Westlands is going to be having a canal shutdown next week. And we will not be able to pull water from the canal for at least about three to four days. Um, so our tanks will be full Sunday night. So, we are encouraging everyone not to water outside all next week. Um, it's critical for us to be able to have water for health and safety reasons. Um, and so, our goal is that, it sounds like the weather, hopefully, it will be a little rainy, but I think that everyone with this weather have restarted up their sprinklers, set their timers, and so now we have to kind of give back to hopefully turning those off next week. So, um, the tanks will be filling up on Sunday, so don't kill us on Sunday either, because we want to be able to catch up by Monday. But the power will be out on the canal, and we'll not be pumping water into the canal. Um, so there will be some signs up on the pride sign, and we will have some construction signs up at the entrances of town reminding people. But we just encourage everyone to not water outside and conserve as much water as possible next week. Um, and I'll be able to give any kind of status update if we see anything critical, any critical need. But just be vigilant out there as well and remind your friends and family just to, you know, conserve water as much as possible.
Okay, uh, good. Okay, councilmembers, any announcements? Signa, Mayor's announcements, um, at this time, I have none. Okay, next slide, this is future agenda items, anyone?
I just have one. Can we just get an, um, update on the command center, measured day funds that we used? What's being done, what have we spent on that so far?
Okay, any others? All right, uh, we have closed session, we have none. So, at this point, this meeting is over. Thank you all for your input.